Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Hudson Common Council to order for Monday, October 19th, 2015. Please join me in the pledge.
(inaudible) (inaudible) of the United States of America and to the authority of which it stands, my mission, your God, indivisible, with the privilege of justice for all.
And, Colonel Rolfe?
Mayor Burchill?
Here.
District one, Morsette?
Here.
District two, position is vacant. District three, McCormick?
Here.
District four, Weber?
Here.
District five, Hoggatt?
Here.
District six, Hall?
Here.
Okay. This time we take comments from the -- any citizens present that would like to make a comment. So now's your chance, if you want to come up and state your name and address and --
Hi, my name is Linda Kluge, and I live at 1755 Laurel Avenue. And I just wanted to take this opportunity first to say thank you that you have this open forum. But the reason I'm here tonight is to share a few concerns that I have about the new street lighting that is in place. I first noticed it when I approached an intersection near us at Seventeenth and Laurel, the one that's south of the four-way stop, and realized that all of a sudden, out of the dark, came a pedestrian, which I didn't see at all. That whole sidewalk north of Seventeenth, where it comes to a T, so it's on the east side of Seventeenth, is completely dark now with the new lighting. I also noticed that in our cul-de-sac, which is the first one there as you go into Laurel on the south end of the fish hook, is only about half-lit. Previously, we had good general lighting in the whole area, and I went with a tape measure, actually, last night, and the footprint of the light is about 45 feet by 150 feet. And beyond that perimeter, it really is black. There's no ambient light standing under the light. I couldn't see that my car was parked on the opposite side of the street. When I look around the city, and I actually drove around both Hudson and North Hudson to kind of get a feel for how did this work in other neighborhoods and areas, and of course, the streetlight is on one corner of a four-way corner, and usually, the light does not reach the opposite corner. Maybe even not directly across the street corner. The light just doesn't stretch that far. And so, as I got to, you know, looking at that, one of the biggest concerns that I have is that there are stark areas of light and then blackness, which really didn't exist before. I actually went up to Holton to take a look at -- I had to get out of the City of Hudson to find an area where there still had the old-style lights, because all of ours have been changed now. And that footprint is greater than 240 feet in diameter, and a lot more ambient light, so uplighting onto the structures near it, giving more of a gradual transition from light to dark, really no stark line where it began or ended. So I guess my concerns are both about safety, about a pedestrian coming out of the dark at you, or you're not seeing them, because your headlights are straight ahead, not to the sides, and the perception of safety in your neighborhoods with areas of stark light and dark, that, you know, just that idea, although I know we are a safe city, it's that idea of, gosh, it's dark out there, I don't think I want to take my dog for a walk, because I don't feel very safe. And I just wondered if, and I don't know if you answer back at these, but just the idea of, you know, did somebody check these out? Did they see them in action somewhere to see that difference? Are there any possible fixes? Can there be something attached to it that will help it to diffuse better and do some uplighting? And if it really doesn't, isn't something that we can do, can we go back to the old lighting, a cost savings of $3,000, I don't think, for an injury or an assault was really -- is really a good trade-off? So, thank you.
We'll forward this on to the Public Works Committee.
It'll be sent to Public Works.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Is there anyone else? Works.
Mr. Mayor, members, it is with great pleasure that I introduce to you today the new director of our library, Tina Norris, right here.
Welcome.
Tina, in her previous position, was the library director for Cannon County Library System in middle Tennessee. Cannon County Library System serves a diverse community in one of the poorest counties in Tennessee, which allowed her to gain a wide range of experience from stretching an almost nonexistent budget to ensuring they were serving those who needed services the most. She has an AS degree in early childhood education from Fresno Community College, a BS degree in English Literature and History from the University of Wisconsin River Falls, and an MLIS degree from the University of South Carolina. She has been working in public libraries for over 10 years and worked in the education field for 10-plus years. She told me that her most important accomplishments are being married to her husband Greg for 27 years, and raising four amazing children, three sons, and one daughter, and one rambunctious dog, Bandit. Tina, say a few words.
I didn't really plan to.
Well, come on, Tina.
Exactly, why not?
I have to go.
Yes, we do.
I was trying to.
Ms. Burke?
Oh. I have been working in public libraries for over 10 years. Prior to that, I volunteered in the library for two years. I worked in education 10-plus years. Before moving to Minnesota, I taught kindergarten in California. When we moved to Minnesota, I worked in special education. So I've had a pretty broad spectrum there, and that was middle school. And surprisingly, I loved those kids. That was a great age. Then I began working for Great River Regional Library in central Minnesota, and I've been in libraries ever since. Found my calling.
Well, we welcome you, and thank you for accepting the position here at Hudson.
Thank you. I'm excited to be here.
All right, Mr. O'Connor, you have something else?
Yeah, a couple things. Number one, I mean, we are really excited to have Tina onboard. We had some very good candidates that we screened, and we got the best of the bunch. So we're very delighted to have her here. We're happy that she accepted our offer. Looking forward to some very good things coming out of the library in the future. We also have a reception for her coming up. We'd like -- we'll be getting public announcements coming out. It was November 9th?
November 9th, it's a Monday.
Okay, Joyce is working on putting that together for us, doing a great job with that.
Six to 8:00 p.m. at the library.
Perfect. And I wanted to give you an update on what else is happening. We, the foundation, has gotten off the ground now with the modifications to their mission statement and additions to the foundation from the library board, as well as the Friends of the Library. We've done some preliminary work on our kickoff for our annual event, annual fundraising event, and we're finishing up the paperwork, well, the announcement for that, and we'll be having a mailing going out in the next couple of weeks. It's an ambitious goal. Our goal is $100,000. And we wanted to stress the importance that we truly believe everybody's on board. We all believe in the importance of a public-private partnership for funding our very important resource, our library here. So I just wanted to give you an update on that, and look forward to some good things to come on that.
Thank you.
So thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Consent agenda, Ms. Burke.
To approve the regular meeting minutes and closed session minutes of October 5th, 2015, to approve claims for payment in the amount of $864,067.38. A detailed description is available in the clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website. Contingent on payment of any outstanding debt owed to the city and approval by the police department, approve the issuance of three regular operators licenses for the period October 16th, 2015, to June 30th, 2017. Additional operator license application information is available in the clerk's office on request. To place on file the finance officer's monthly report for September, the building inspector's third quarter report, and the utility commission minutes of October 13th, 2015. That is all.
Who for approval? Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call?
McCormick?
Yes.
Hoggatt?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Morsette?
Yes.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is Public Works Committee. Discussion, possible action on Vine Street reconstruction feasibility report. Tom?
Earlier this summer, we had a discussion in front of council regarding the Vine Street reconstruction project. At that meeting, the council authorized preparation of a feasibility report update. If you might recall, the initial report was done about three years ago. And that report does include three project areas. It's pretty much Vine Street from First to Ninth, Locust Street between Second and Third, and a intersection improvements right outside City Hall here at the corner of Third and Walnut. So again, what we're looking at and discussing tonight is that report update, and what I'd like to do is introduce Steve Heath from Bolton Mank. They're our consultant that actually prepared the preliminary report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we were charged with taking the report that was done in 2012 and the flood study that was done in 2010, reviewing both of those documents and updating the cost to what will it cost to do Vine Street now. We did review the model that was done for the flood study. We recommend some changes be made to what the improvements, the recommended improvements back then were. So if, take five minutes, and I'll just go through what we came up with. The flood study that was done in 2010 had an outlet that went on the upstream side of the swimming beach. We're recommending that we relocate that to the downstream side. The flood study had a smaller pipe than we're recommending. We're using a 42-inch. We're extending a larger pipe up the alley between Fourth and Fifth, and we'll come up with a 36 and go to a 30. The flood study had cutting off overland flow to that area. Just how we do that, we couldn't come up with a way to do that. So instead of cutting it off, we'll continue to accept the overland flow, we'll just have bigger pipes to accept it, and that's also what necessitated the bigger outfall pipe. Upstream from there, there was another area of flooding up by Seventh Street in this alley, and we'll pick that up with a 12-inch. The water mains that were shown in the 2012 report were eight-inch all the way up, talking to the water utility. There's always been a need to get the million-gallon reservoir on Seventh Street connected down to Second Street somehow, and then extend it to the north. North Hudson has already stubbed a 12-inch line down to the lake. So that's kind of on the long-range plan, is to get our million gallons connected to North Hudson. To do that, we'll bring a 12-inch down to Second Street, eight-inch down to First. 12-inch will go up to Seventh and connect to a stub on Seventh that was put in when Seventh Street was redone quite a few years ago. From there on up, we'll replace the old six-inch cast-iron main with eight-inch ductal up to the end of the project. Change in sanitary sewer, we found two manholes that we're recommending, one at Third and Vine, and one at Fourth and Vine, that are in bad shape, and since we'll have the road dug up, we should replace those now. These costs are in our estimate. We also had the sanitary sewer in Vine Street televised, and then kind of looked at the condition of it. It is in need of being lined in the future, but that wouldn't be part of this project. That's a standalone project. But just a heads-up, we can work with Kip on that, too. Typical section for Vine Street hasn't really changed from what was in the report from 2012. It'll be 36 feet of paving from curb to curb. One thing we are recommending to change is, we're not recommending taking out the sidewalks that are right at the right-of-way line. We walked them, looked at them, and they're in really good shape, except for a very sharp amount of footage. So what we're recommending, leave those in place, would be just a waste of money. So the section will be 36 feet, which is about what we have right now from First Street up to Fourth Street. Then it narrows up a little bit to like 31. So we'll go with a consistent width from First all the way up to Ninth of 36 feet. The pavement section will be similar to what's out there now. It'll be five inches of bituminous on eight inches of Class V gravel, and then we put in the cost for some subgrade improvements if we need it. That's in the estimate. If anybody has any questions, stop me anytime. And then Locust Street, we reviewed the model that was done as part of the 2010 flood study, which called for removing the little bit of crown that's in Locust on the north side right now, and straight grating it all to the south side. That reduced, the model showed a reduction in depth from about nine inches down to about six inches. Then I had him park some cars up against the curb with the six-inch flow coming down, and it will still jump the sidewalk during a 10-year event. So the money that we're spending there, we're not going to get the true results that we think or thought we were going to get, or at least, we're not recommending it. The other thing that was never done as part of that study, and before you redo the street, the sanitary sewer was not looked at. We are going to look at that now, we are going to televise it and see what it looks like. No one had talked to the water utility. The water main that's in that street is from the 1800s, it's cast iron. It should be replaced before the city spends 200 and some thousand on the street. So the other, the bottom line is, fix, you know, putting water on top of the street like an open-channel flow isn't really the fix that I think we need to do long-term. The fix, long-term, would be a new outlet down to the river with pipe, and then more catch basins further up to the east. So is there any, I went through that kind of fast, is there any questions?
We've also uncovered some other problems further up Locust Street, and I know Kip is working with the DNR on that, so there are more issues. So I know you guys have recommended not to put that in there, but you had previously mentioned lining, the wasn't part of this project. Could we take that money and use that for lining, and would that save time now, or?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the lining project, that's a specialty company that does that? If we did it as part of Vine Street, it would just be a subcontractor. I think the utility would be further ahead to just bid that out on its own, once we're done with the street. It's non-evasive construction. I mean, they just park a truck, add a manhole, and they push a liner through, fill it with hot water, that's one process. It cures in place, it's structural. You really should never have to go back again. It's a better lining than what we have there now with the concrete. And that's a whole nother discussion, why the concrete's failing, it's gas buildup from the sewers, so.
Any other questions?
I see that you're going to be removing a lot of trees. How many trees are going to be removed? Are they going, you're going to be removing all of the trees on, along Vine Street, or?
Any, well, Mr. Mayor, members of council, any tree that would be in the way of a service line may have to come down if we normally, the way I approach that, is we look at which trees we think we have to take, and then evaluation is done with city staff to see if we really need to take them. I've heard we should cut down every tree that was, every ash tree, because they're going to get it, they're going to die anyway. So take them down now, put in a new tree at this time. Other than that, I don't know which trees for sure will have to come down.
Okay. Any other questions? Tom, did you have anything that you wanted to add? Thank you, Steve.
And I realize this is kind of a large project, and it's maybe a lot to go through in a kind of short order there, but again, relative to a staff recommendation, what we'd be looking for tonight is, the earlier discussion this summer, we had talked about potentially hitting a schedule that gets us to construction in 2016. And so what we're looking for tonight would be a, the recommendation would be for the council to approve this report update, and again, by approving this report update, you're not ordering a project, you're approving the cost estimates with the modified design that Steve just mentioned. And the second part of that would be to authorize the consultant to prepare plans and specifications going forward, again, and to meet that schedule. We previously have a letter of engagement with Bolton Mank that does cover the plan prep services, and that amount of money was in the 2015 capital budget fund as well. I guess with that, we can entertain any other questions the council might have.
I'm in favor of moving forward with this. This has been a long time coming, and that road is not getting any better. It's getting worse, and we're going to go through another winter. It's going to get worse, and the Bandit approach is no longer probably feasible. So I would recommend, I would move, we accept the updated report as presented.
And to move forward with a?
And to move, you want it all in one or two motions?
All in one.
Okay. And then I would recommend that we move forward with the process of project design? Is that what you want?
Authorizing preparation of plans and specifications.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a lot of seconds. Any comments or questions? This is to keep us on track for a possible, next year, let's, if we don't move forward, we won't get it done.
Well, a quick review on why some of the urgency, and the DOT has big plans for construction on the bridge, and part of what needs to happen in 2017 will be a detour coming down, and Vine Street would be potentially used as a detour. And then in 2019, DOT still has in the books to serve, mill an overlay, Second Street from 94 Bridge to Vine Street, and then from Vine Street up to the Malibu Bridge would be a complete reconstruction of Second Street. So having Vine Street done in 2016 will allow us to use that in various detours to accommodate all the DOT construction. So it is long overdue, and also, it's, having that done will help with all this other excitement that's going on.
I know Neil said discussions with our financial consultants, but we'll make sure we keep that conversation going as far as bonding for the project, so that we're ready whenever we're ready to close it or where.
So we'll get you the cost per thousand for that cost, too?
Okay.
When we get the specs back, or the bids back, specs.
Right now, we're trying to get the plans and specs prepared, so that we can authorize an ad for bid in January and take bids in February, I believe.
I had one question.
Yep.
And this really goes back to the engineering company, but is there any reason why the electrical utilities couldn't be buried? There, it's a huge impediment on the west or the south side of the street. Those poles are, they're really, they're a hazard.
You're talking about XL now, the power poles?
Yes.
We had an initial meeting with all the utility companies about, I don't know, three, four weeks ago. The plan at this point, especially in that stretch where the 31-foot existing street width is going to go a little bit wider to 36, they're going to have to set those poles back. They're only about two feet behind the curb now. They are not going to volunteer putting that under, and I know it's a large feed that goes continuously east. I know it's quite an expense for them. I think, don't quote me on this, but in past meetings I've had with, when this topic gets brought up, it's about a 10-to-1 cost differential typically to have a wire on a pole versus We could bring that up again to them, and they are, that's part of this schedule as well, is they're going to have to work with us and get out in front of our construction to make all this work. But we could bring that up to them, but I know it's a kind of a large expense, and they typically do not do that, at least.
I think we should ask them again.
We can bring that up.
Yeah, let's get a number. Why not?
I think we did bring it up in that meeting, and it didn't go real far, I believe. It was because of the expense. We can bring that up again.
Bring it up and say, we'd like to hear you. What is it really going to cost you to do that? As we widen that particular section, it seems to me like we're going to have poles that are either going to be closer to the curb, or going to be closer to the sidewalk, one of the two, and neither of which is good.
Yeah, I mean, we only have a seven-foot, I believe, existing green space there now between the sidewalk and the curb, so if we widen it, we'll have five.
Then if they don't move them, then they need to mark those poles with reflective lighting or something, so.
Well, they're going to have to move some of them, for sure, because.
But I see that along trails now, and when you have poles that are close to the edge, they're marked with some sort of visibility, make them higher visibility.
Yeah, we can do that, for sure.
Okay. Any other questions for Tom? Or Steve? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Don't go too far, Tom.
I'm just dropping some paperwork.
Oh, okay.
Scramble out.
Next item on the agenda is discussion and possible request for a common council workshop on the special assessment policy. Again, as Tom has stated, current assessment policy is being reviewed. It was adopted in 1982, and last revision was done October 16th, 2000. So I thought it would be a good idea to, for us to sit down, and we would like to have a workshop, a separate meeting, because I think there's going to be a lot of, a lot of discussion and possible changes that we could come up with, or maybe we won't change anything. But I think it's something that we haven't looked at in such a long time, that all these projects, the benefit that our residents are getting, and the property owners, we have to kind of come to an agreement. You can see our current policy with what we have with curb, sidewalk, 50%, 100% of driveway are assessed, but there's, Tom has been, I'll let, go ahead, Tom, I'll let you continue on with what you and I have talked.
You're doing a really good job, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, in the council issue sheet, the mayor touched on quite a few things, but to change the policy is going to require some discussion, and there's some pretty key decisions that the council's going to have to make. In the issue sheet there, all I did is I listed, there's like four bullet points, and those are just kind of major points that somebody might want one way, somebody else might oppose that. Again, and I do believe that a workshop meeting is a good way to sit down, we can provide some examples, we can gear those examples to past or future projects, or proposed projects, and give you some kind of a dollar example on a specific lot, so that you can see this decision results in such and such an outcome relative to dollars, and vice versa. Just a quick, if you look at that current policy that the mayor referred, there are 50% curb, 50% sidewalk. If you were doing a residential street project, the cost is somewhere around $200, $250 a foot, so if you were to build it right down centerline. This current policy that you have now, but, don't quote me, but it's pretty close to maybe in the 15% to 20% range. So you might be assessing 15% or 20% of the cost, and then, of course, you have this other remaining 80%, which is kind of a large number to fund through other sources. But anyway, if there's any other questions, I can answer them, but I do believe a workshop meeting where we can throw out some examples of specific dollars, and it gives you an opportunity to discuss a little better before you make these.
About Monday, November 21st, 23rd. That's, I think that's a week before Thanksgiving. It's a non-council night.
Are we gone?
Okay.
I'll be here.
We'll send out, first of all, do you think it's a good idea?
Yes, absolutely. No question about it.
Kip, you have some? Why don't you come out, you've got to come up to the mic.
I guess it's just a real quick question, but the utilities would like to be involved in this discussion, too, just so we're all on the same page on that.
Super, yeah, good.
Fundatively settled for the 23rd. I'll send out an email and then if there's an issue, I'll get my writing out.
Is there an earlier time, or?
If it was earlier, because I'm, you're kind of looking at the, the 19th is our last meeting, like?
14th.
Listen, Steve.
16th.
So leaving on the 17th.
Okay. So if we did, okay. We'll send out an email, and we'll.
And I'll look at a couple other dates, too, and I'll see if we can get a consensus.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Tom.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay, Mr. Zooli, next item on the agenda is discussion, possible actions on items related to proposed universal playground at White Camp Park. Acceptance of donation from the Hudson Hospital Foundation. Acceptance of donation from the Hudson Hospital Foundation, funding source for, funding source for city's cost in the pour-in-place pad, and funding source for relocation of current equipment.
Good evening. This evening, we are, like the mayor said, looking for possible discussion and action on the proposed Universal Playground Park for White Camp Park. The first bullet point is, we'd like to discuss is to accept the donation from the Hus, Hudson Hospital Foundation of, for the playground equipment. The cost is for the donation is approximately $163,684. They have received a grant of $77,000 for this, so their cost would be approximately $96,000. So we're hoping that the council will accept the donation and, and have discussion on that, and that would be the first order of business, I believe.
Anybody have a problem accepting $163,000?
Not I.
How many lawyers does?
Not I. I'll move to approve the donation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
So the second part of this proposal is that for this playground to be of Universal Park, there's a foam, like a rubber, rubber pad underneath the play equipment instead of sand or wood chip so the wheelchairs can, and other people with disabilities can use the playground. We would propose that this pour-in-place pad that's estimated at $137,000 would be paid from, cost from the park, dedication fees for that side of the interstate.
What's the balance in there, Neil? Do you know, in that fund?
I think it's about $350,000.
Anybody have any problem with that?
No.
Is there a motion to approve that?
I'll move to approve the pour-in-place Universal Playground.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion?
It's going to be a great.
Be a great project.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Last one, Tom, go ahead.
The, the existing playground that is, will be replaced could be used in other parks. I think we've talked about possibly Lakefront Park. The reallocate, the, to reallocate, excuse me, relocate the equipment would be done by volunteers and possibly city staff to disassemble the current playground and locate it wherever, you know, I think the park board already recommended Lakefront Park, but there's still some additional fees, monies needed for that, for the edging and some other equipment for that. So we're looking for 9,000, just under $10,000 for that portion of it. We still haven't determined a fund for that portion of that.
We can do that in the spring, I think, or we can do it later. I don't think we have to find a place for it right now.
We may have to, for 2016, we may have to look at reallocating some of your.
Some of the.
Capital.
Yeah.
But that can be done at the time, once we maybe have a better exact cost.
For 10,000, we can, we can reallocate or find a different way for it.
So that doesn't really need action.
So I guess those are the three bullet points that we'd like to discuss, and.
Anybody, we can wait on the 93 for now?
Is the project going to happen right away? You need to move the equipment out?
Uh, once the, you know, if the donation, the city accepted that, and we have the other things in part, I guess we could move the playground this fall if we have time.
We don't have to set it up, though.
No, not.
They're storing it over the winter. It won't be installed.
Okay. Kerry or Ryan, you guys have anything? We really appreciate, you guys want to say anything?
Thank you.
No. Well, you got to say more than that, but this is, this is a really neat project. Ryan or Mr. O'Connor, who, Ryan can.
We already listened to Rich.
We've already listened to.
And some of you've already heard from me as well, but again, it's Ryan Carey, and I'm the chair of the Major Gifts Committee for the Hospital Foundation. We're very happy to work with the city on this project. We think that the, the Universal Park is something that will benefit several or numerous children with special needs. Reports that we have gathered from the school district tell us that there are about 800 students in our district that have special needs, and so we think that the, the need is there. We're happy that we're able to take some, some funds and raise other funds from our, for our foundation to contribute to this project. And, and the city's commitment for the pour-in-place pad just makes this thing perfect. I mean, it, we didn't want to skimp on this project. We wanted to make sure if we're going to do it, we did it right. And so we think the partnership for this project is going to be great for the community. It's, it's also fantastic that we can repurpose the existing equipment down to Lakefront. I will say that the equipment at Lakefront is the stuff that I played on when I was a five-year-old.
Wow, that liar go, huh?
So anyway, I think that it's long overdue. I think this is win-win for our foundation and the city, and we appreciate your willingness to work with us to make it happen.
Well, Ryan, and, and we just think it's a great project, and we thank you for all the work that you guys have done. I know it's kind of moved slow for a while, but I think it's, it's gained the momentum, and I think it's going to, it's going to be a great project for us. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anything else on that? New business, discussion, possible action on employment agreement for St. Corre EMS Director. Devin?
The EMS Commission met last Thursday, interviewed candidates, and have recommended selection of Brandon Lixit, who is currently a captain and one of our critical care paramedics on the service to fill a position. It's, the offer of employment is attached. It's pretty basic because he's already an employee, so there isn't a lot of, you know, things we have to put in the offer, so that's the recommendation of the EMS Commission is to hire Brandon as the EMS Director.
I'll move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
And it would be effective then, upon your approval tonight.
Brandon was unanimous choice.
Yep.
Okay.
Excellent.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now Brandon has to come up and introduce himself and talk a little bit. Please. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks for having me here tonight, and thanks for giving me this opportunity. I look forward to working with all of you. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Brandon.
Communication for future agenda items, common council members.
I have one issue between, on 11th Street between, it's the intersection of Laurel and 11th. If you're going south, there seems to be a dip in the road we just did how many years ago, and it's starting to become a hazard, I think. It's, I think something's washed underneath it, so I think Public Works needs to at least.
Can we talk about it later, or has it been?
We can take, talk about it later. I mean, this is just for future agenda, but.
But I'd like to have it on the agenda for at least Public Works.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good, Randy.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, um, when we're thinking about bonding and stuff, Tower Road may, may behoove us to, that's about, that's another pretty large project that's kind of not on the radar at the moment. That would eat up most of our maintenance budget, so maybe we put it on the agenda to talk about that as well.
Yep.
I don't know if the next meeting's timely or not, or, but.
And we, it was tentatively going to be on this agenda. We're kind of, Tom indicated to me, we're kind of waiting to, from the Town of Troy to make sure that they're.
Yeah, that's right.
And I've got it on the next agenda, kind of in the tickler file.
Okay.
Whenever we hear back from the town, so we know what their commitment is, then Tom can come forward with it and let us know what's going on.
We got to keep that on the radar.
Yeah, I know. I keep thinking, man, well, let's not forget about that one.
I do have it on the next agenda, and if they're ready, the town's ready, and then I'll just keep putting it on the next agenda until they're ready.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I've got something.
Yes.
Tomorrow, at the library board, we're going to be talking a little bit about the, the contributions that Hudson makes to the library that aren't articulated because of the agreement, and so Neil has made some recommendations as far as things that Hudson is paying for but are not being pushed through the library budget. And this would increase our cost per circulation, which would increase the county amounts that they would be reimbursing us for rural circulation. So anyway, I will.
You think he'll be ready for the next council meeting, or?
I'll, I'll keep you posted, but yes, I would hope so.
Okay.
But it, it would involve changing the agreement, so.
Right now, they, they pay an administrative fee.
Right.
To cover payroll and accounting and that type of thing, but there are, like you said, there are things that we cover that.
Mm-hmm.
We're not being paid for.
Okay.
Cool.
Thank you. City attorney, anything? City administrator?
I will have the budget. The finance committee made their final recommendations tonight, so by the end of the week, I'll send an email out. I should have your budget binders ready, so I'll just leave them at the front desk for you, and if you don't, can't get down here, you'll have them at the next meeting, but I should have them by the end of the week.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.